Well, our meeting to order. First item of business is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Scoog.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Nye is absent this evening. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, well, move on. Spencer suggested that we move number six up to number three if council would agree.
That's fine.
Yes. Okay, we'll move number six up to next discussion Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation contract. Larry?
Okay. Mayor and council, what you have before you this evening for your consideration with next week, the actual adoption of the contract and any modifications that you may elect to put in place after this evening, if any. Just to share with you, you're all familiar with Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation and the role the town played in the formation of that organization back many years ago. We've been a founding entity, if you will, but the philosophy behind it was that we wanted to see at least 50% of the membership in the foundation being non-governmental. And the foundation has a long track record of doing an outstanding job of levering leveraging memberships from entities in the Quad City area, predominantly Prescott Valley. We have a very long history of attracting jobs to the town of Prescott Valley. And as you also are aware, Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation does not get into the world of commercial job attraction. It's part of the three-legged stool. Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation is looking at industrial jobs, value-added jobs. Commercial jobs is a sector that we brought in-house, and that has been Greg Pfister and others prior to him that go after retail entities. So PVDF has done a very good job for the community in growing new jobs and also working very hard to retain existing jobs. And we could sit down and go through example after example of successes over the years. But getting to the point of tonight's work-study session is we are proposing a departure from past practice, which was having a three-year contract. We're suggesting that we have a five-year contract. We want to show the support that this mayor and council has for job development in the town of Prescott Valley. As we are trying to grow our economy, grow good-paying jobs, we want to go ahead and show that we are solidly behind PVDF. Okay, so we're looking at a five-year contract. Now, having said that, during the course of the negotiation on the contract, there was some discussion about increasing the contribution by the town. We resisted that. And what we suggested, now you'll recall that our payment to PVDF actually went down several thousand dollars during the Great Recession, okay, as we were cutting everything to keep our budget as balanced as we possibly could. We're looking at $150,000 a year, and there was discussion about going ahead and increasing that compensation now that we've come out of the recession. And you'll see in the contract, and you probably have already noticed, that as we do with many things, it's performance-based. And so there are triggers in there, either through membership and/or jobs or a combination of the two, that would automatically trigger an increase in the annual compensation to PVDF. But until that is demonstrated and there's performance that actually takes place, then we are suggesting that the fee be the same as it has been for the last several years. And so with that, I know that there are some members of PVDF or partners that are here that would very much like to talk to council. And so with that, Mayor, if you have any questions, I'm certainly available to answer.
Any one so far? Otherwise, let's get Mr. Fain, President of the Association.
Mayor Scoog, council, thank you very much for this opportunity to come here tonight and discuss the contract that you have before you and the opportunity to continue to expand economic growth in Prescott Valley. Quickly, I'd like to just introduce some of the board members that showed up here today. We have Vice President Jerian Coiman, Coiman Real Estate. We have Treasurer Mike Daly, Secretary Treasurer Mike Daly. We have Donna Laxton, who's with the Arizona State Credit Union, Steve Quinn with Arizona Public Service. Also, our fantastic staff, Mike Paredes and Tracy, who keep the office open every single day and keep us moving in the right direction. You know, briefly, I'll just give you a little background and history. My family has developed five industrial parks in the town of Prescott Valley, starting back in the late 70s. We're on our fifth park right now, and it's Big Sky Business Park. And you're all familiar with it. It's got ACE Distribution, it's got Lockheed Martin, just to name a couple. We have been involved in public-private relationships that have made job base and job growth a reality in Prescott Valley throughout 25 years. Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation has a chair, as me being involved in, I'm on the board, but been a member for many, many years. I believe in the public-private process, I believe in the contract, I believe in what it provides for this community. And proof is in the pudding, so to speak, when you go out and you tour Big Sky Business Park. Public-private relationship is ACE Distribution. Public-private relationship is Lockheed Martin. Those are two fine examples. Public-private relationship is Enterprise Parkway through also a grant with the Arizona Commerce Authority. Now, as a group, we understand our role in economic development is both global today because manufacturing is global, and we're working in a global market. We have to react and be on our toes and respond to requests for proposals, whether they come from Arizona Public Service, whether they come from the Arizona Commerce Authority, or whether they come from site selectors. And we have to respond to those proposals like probably 10 other communities are. It's highly competitive, very successful. This town, pound for pound, has done very well in selecting huge, landing huge employers like ACE, like MI Windows, like PrintPak. These, PrintPak came from Paycor, an original public-private relationship that came out of Prescott prior to Prescott Valley. These are important things. We're still set up and ready to react and respond to those requests for proposals. Equally important today, a shift in what we're doing, is we want to focus, have a directive strategy, and focus on companies that employ 5 to 35, 5 to 50 employees, target-specific, out of California, working with both offices out of LA. Arizona Commerce Authority has an office out of LA, Arizona Commerce Authority has an office out of San Jose. Now, our past has had communication with them, but our action today is not only just to email them, communicate and talk to them, we're going to put boots on the ground, and we're going to have a directive strategy to target specific companies that are smaller in nature, that don't require all the incentives like the big companies do. Economic development is driven sometimes between what communities will offer, what states will offer another employer to come here. What we want to capitalize on is the fact that we've got one of the best places to live in the United States, certainly the best place to live in Arizona. And we know the employers that are already here today, that have moved some of their companies here, have done so out of desire to be here. We want to tap that group of individuals, try to focus and identify who they are, and give them an opportunity and share our community with them to raise their families, move their companies here instead of do their work in LA, do it out of Prescott where the air is clean all the time, the schools are fantastic, and housing for every economic strata in that corporation company. So we're excited about developing a brochure that will not just be a three-trifold, but like an eight-page brochure, coffee table piece, that will actually speak to that particular corporate executive, give them the idea to be motivated to inquire more in with the organization and relocate their company. In addition to that, we, I'd like to turn it over to Mike to give a little bit more detail on some of our strategy for 2016, 2017. We recognize we have to have an international presence, and we've already got the groundwork started for that. And, Mike?
Well, welcome, Mike. Come on up.
Oh, I thought you had a question, Mayor.
We might have questions. We might have a lot of them, so.
Excellent. That's why we're here. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Councilmembers, good evening. Mike Paredes, Executive Director of the PVDF Organization here in Prescott Valley. Just a little, take a couple minutes to talk to you about, Diane, do they have the sheets that are, yep, in front of you, you have a couple of talking points, bullet points for your reading. Just a quick explanation of it, just to give you a quick overview of the domestic business recruitment and the international relationship development that we have been doing over the past year, of which I was hired. I was hired to do, one thing is to create jobs, to have boots on the ground, and it's my boots that are going to be on the ground and have been on the ground, so a lot of wear and tear, which is a good thing. We're currently working, obviously, with our local, our regional statewide organization, Arizona Commerce Authority, both at the Phoenix office and at the LA and Northern California offices. The Southern California Trade Missions that we are spearheading, excuse me, that we are spearheading is in conjunction with the ACA office. And I'll give you an example. Those are fixed meetings with vetted companies, of which myself and the director out in the LA office have been working. They know exactly the types of companies that we are looking at here for PV. Those companies, anywhere from 5 to 50 to 75 employees, that are very attracted to this type of community, of community which they can succeed. And then those who are, you know, precisely here on this March trip, or the end of February-March trip, is to target those companies because, one, they have expressed interest in leaving the state of California, or are having difficulty with local or state regulations, which is mostly the case. So again, those are vetted companies, fixed meetings. It is not just, you know, go out there and start knocking on doors. These are meetings that have been set by either myself or, the name of the individual is Peter Reese, which is the representative from Arizona Commerce Authority in the LA office. Also looking at some of the marketing campaigns with our brochure that Ron alluded to earlier, and a couple of trade shows that we are looking at attending, late spring, early summer. Whether we do it alone, or we do it alongside APS or Arizona Commerce Authority, that is yet to be determined, but related toward the manufacturing sectors. On the international relationship development, it was very important for the office to get involved and present Prescott Valley its potential investment here in an international spectrum. So we have, I have personally visited approximately two to three times these US-based offices that are overseas, the United States Department of Commerce, United States Commercial Service, United Mexico, US, Mexico Chamber of Commerce, and the Mexico City Office for the Arizona Commerce Authority. They know of us, meaning they know not just PVDF, they know exactly what Prescott Valley, who we are, where we're at, and what we have to offer, which is a good thing, because those organizations are the eyes and ears of those potential clients looking at a US presence. It's not precisely just Mexican companies out of the Mexico City, Guadalajara. As you know, we live in a global society, which, you know, six or seven, they say six or seven out of 10 companies that I have worked or they have presented to me are not Mexican companies. They are European, Asian, and from other regions in the world. We have access to them clear closely with a three-hour flight down south, so that's why I take advantage of the situation. And obviously, working with the ACA office down in Mexico City, as soon as that brochure is done, believe me, two boxes of our information magazine will be sent to them, and will be, I have a shelf there waiting for me to, waiting for PV information. Other offices is Atlantic Corridor Ireland. I had made relationships with them, I met with them, I say approximately 10 years ago, and we became very good friends. This is an organization like PVDF, but in a very large spectrum that represents a lot of companies in Ireland, and they have a lot of European connections, obviously, being in that region of the world. A lot of the companies, a lot of organizations like PVDF, south of the border, I believe it's important. Sometimes our local companies need assistance when it comes to certain types of fab work or manufacturing, and so those bottom ones are the ones that are here close by, the Industrial Commission Mexicali, the Economic Development Commission Mexicali, Bahia Aerospace, the Arizona Commission of, Arizona Mexico Commission, and the Border Trader Alliance. The AMC, Arizona Mexico Commission, is the governor's arm for international business development with Sonora and the state of Sonora and the country of Mexico. If you turn the page, I'll give you an example of the business attraction that, business attraction that we've been involved with since last year. And I say last year because I was hired in November of, not this past November, the previous one. And so Stonecoast, Colorado Company, obviously, they are here in PV. I believe they're now up to about five or six jobs down the street. It is a, it is considered a firearm, but it's not a, it's a little gun that the farmers use to make noise and scare off the birds, but it's still a little gun, so. Vinyl Vision is our, is our, is our local, is our current company that we've been working with over the past couple of months. They are based out of Southern California, and they have made a decision to relocate. It is a complete relocation into the area. 35 jobs, 30,000 square feet. At the current time, it looks like they'll be across the border to our neighbors to the west, but PVDF was involved from day one, and we did a good 90% of the work to relocate them into this area. We're still in discussion and possibly a PV location, but it is a regional locate. Pacific Leonard International Development, it's an LA-based company. These are, this organization I traveled with throughout China, and so this is, these are good contacts of which I've had in the past that I have involved PVDF with. The last group of companies, the Texel Company out of Mexico, firearms manufacturer, this was one I visited approximately six months ago. As of last month, I am involved ACA to help me out with this company. They are at the Orange County-Los Angeles border, therefore, I've asked ACA, Peter Reese down in LA, to help me out in this possible relocation, relocation, excuse me. As you know, these projects take time. It's not from one day to the next, it's about building relationships, and it starts from there, so. Aerospace Industry Company out of California, that's the latest one. This was about 30 days, yeah, about 30 days ago or so. This was a PVDF lead, and as well as a sports and health company. The reason I can't be specific on the names is because we're still working on them, and as soon as we can start meeting here locally, then we start involving individuals and we can make it public. I wanted to give you an example of some of, some of the leads that come out of ACA, some of the reasons why perhaps PV have, or the region here has not been on the competitive side because of those specific ones, and not just because we are, I believe we are very competitive, but the ones, the specific leads coming out of ACA. One lead required high-volume water, wastewater usage. And we're talking about a few hundred million gallons of water, so obviously, that's an issue and very tough issue. Building size, four of those leads required building size, existing inventory between 30,000 and 100,000 square feet. So I backed and looked at the, at those leads, and those were, that was the range. Airport access and also rail access. Direct airport, they needed a hangar, and they needed to be a couple feet away from the runway, so that's what it is. And also rail access. So when we get those leads, if we, as PVDF, cannot work with them just because we don't have a rail access, or we don't have an airport, you know, a regional mind thinks regionally, therefore, we try to keep it within our Quad City region. And so proper referrals are made over to GPREP, or they're made over to the pertaining city that, in this case, may function, so. Business retention, these are three companies that we have worked with directly. They have expressed not any stress or anything to that effect, but they have, we have reached out to them and helped them internally on various issues, both Superior Industries, Advanced Ballistic Systems, and Guidance Aviation, so. If you turn the page, the marketing and advertising, the marketing brochure, it will be an eight-page. The way we want to do it is specifically for PV, not just for PVDF purposes, but I, my plan, our plan as PVDF is to have this magazine-type of info be used not only with PDF marketing, but hopefully with the school district for teacher attraction, also perhaps at the hospital with nurses and those in the healthcare. Specific data that will be used not only for our purposes, but for the entire region as well as yourself. I hope you guys keep a couple of three, you know, packets with you in the car, anywhere you meet somebody from out of town, you say, "Take this," and read a little bit about our potential investment here in the region. Just quickly, I know I'm talking a lot, but advertising, we're doing some local advertising here with the Air Caff and Owners and Pilots Association event later on in the summer, locally with the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, which has been an excellent partner with our organization. And depending on this upcoming fiscal year's budget, some of the national, international publications, I'm going to wait on that just because we have to take care of our budget, so depending on where we're at, we'll be advertising on those as well. Social media, your normal website, Facebook, LinkedIn, and Twitter. We will be implementing a business retention expansion program, a BRE program, it'll be sector-specific. We want to provide business solutions to increase qualified labor, expansion opportunities, and growing PV tax base. We believe that taking care of who's here is very important. If we can assist in any way, shape, or form to increase jobs for our local companies, I'll be the first one to raise my hand, and I'll be there to help with our local and state and national resources. E-marketing campaigns, the California Trade Missions, as we talked about earlier, the national trade shows, asset mapping, working with domestic and international consulting firms. This is similar to working with ACA, but on the private side. Again, depending on budget, we'll be working with individual corporations as to that effect for job lead generation. And continue working with the ACA, Arizona Association, excuse me, Arizona Commerce Authority, Arizona Association for Economic Development, the Governor's Office for the Arizona Mexico Commission, and amongst others. Again, I want to personally thank you for your support, and I wanted to thank you for the consideration of this contract that we are here today. I know I spoke a lot, but, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions for myself or anybody here on the board, I'll be more than happy.
You have a question?
Yeah. I know the good work you're doing, and, you know, I think it's tremendous as to what you're doing. Most companies that are looking to come here, do we have the employees that they're looking for? And what, you know, for those companies that might not, you know, there might not be a workforce waiting for them, what are we doing to get that workforce and train them? I know you work well with the Yavapai College and some of the JTED programs, but, you know, do we, like, if someone comes and they need 75 employees, do we have 75 employees for those kind of companies? Because I know the companies you're going for are higher-paying jobs and more technical, and, you know, it requires a little more schooling than, you know, high school, so...
Yeah, well, the companies that I have personally met with in Southern California, we do meet those requirements in terms of that job labor. Before getting into economic development, I worked in the workforce development offices for a few years, so I understand that compatibility between the two. Yes, and you are complete, PVDF works directly with Alexandria Wright and Dr. Wills at Yavapai College with our complete and only assets to this community. We put our brains together, and we are trying to be a little proactive, going out there and working with the local companies to understand their needs. But also, I come back with information as well and allow, and, you know, put all those requirements on the table, because we don't not want to, we don't want to be in that position, saying, yes, a company of 35 wants to relocate, but we hit a wall because of qualified labor. And so, yeah, we are trying to work, and again, it's very, it's an asset in the community having Yavapai College and those individuals involved, and I speak to them every single week. So I guess there's different ways of looking at it, looking at the local companies and seeing what their future needs are as well, and coming back with information, coming back from California. You have to be careful, because if we recruit a high-tech company with needing masters in engineering, you know, 20, 25 peoples, and, you know, there are companies that have that. Unfortunately, perhaps we might not have that, but we have them as a presence here, and hopefully, we get them.
And Councilman Grossman, one real advantage PVDF has is they have the president of Yavapai College on the board as an ad hoc member. And so when there is a training need that a given industry or particular business has, when they have those needs, we have a direct link to an educational institution that will go out of their way to go ahead and train up people to help out that company.
Yeah, and Councilmember Grossman, we, almost every single board meeting that we have, we either talk to Penny Wills, or we talk to the hospital, and also the K-12 system here with the Humboldt School District, and so labor and staffing issues and questions are always discussed.
Yeah, I mean, I know you stay on top of it, but I just wanted to be sure, and I will keep asking that question, you know, as long as I go on, you know. I know I've seen changes at the JTED programs as a result of the relationship that you have with the Yavapai College and some of the JTED programs. So I'm glad to see that's still going on, and, you know, that you're aware of it and you're staying on top of it, and it's, you know, it's something that I, I'm glad that we continue to do. I know a couple of years ago, I went to a Manufacturers Association meeting, and there was somebody there who was always recruiting for engineers. And he said, "The hardest thing was getting them to Prescott Valley to take a look. Once they got here, they stayed," you know, "and they were impressed with what we have to offer as far as the community and everything else that goes with it." So, you know, I'm glad you're doing the work you're doing, but it's important to constantly stay on top of, you know, do we have the, you know, do we have the workers for the businesses that are coming here? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Grossman. Thank you.
Mayor, you have a question?
Well, actually, I just, you know, I really just had a comment, and I believe that, you know, you bring the jobs here. I believe that people will aspire to do better and get the education and achieve for to be an engineer, or to achieve to be a doctor, or whatever. I mean, that's what America is. It's not a place to be held down. America is a place for you to grow and prosper. So, you know, I look forward to bringing in those other, other types of jobs where people can take and really grasp onto the education and move up that ladder and aspire to great things and build a great life, and it's inspirational for all other people, because once you see somebody do it, then you know what? You're going to be like, you know what? They did it. I can do this. And it goes on and on, and it just continues. So, you know, I encourage you to look toward those bigger types of jobs, and it helps with the college. Penny is able to reach out and work together, and, you know, the only way we're going to ever get through a lot of the things that we have in our everyday life is to work together. This is not a one-man show. We have got to pull together. All of us have something to give, and at the end of the day, we make it a full, whole picture, and all of us will benefit from that. So, you know, I really appreciate, I appreciate the long relationship the town has had with this organization. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mallory. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mike?
Yeah, I just had a few regarding, you know, your handout here.
Yes, sir.
And I was curious, in terms of the jobs that we're putting in the agreement, do you feel, I think it's 150 per year for about five years, do you feel that's aggressive for our community?
I do. I, it's...
Good.
It's, you know, it's like anything, you put your best foot forward.
Right.
Myself and PVDF will put our best foot forward, taking any, I was brought up to, in a way, that anything or anything that anybody puts something in front of you, you find a way to do it, and you accomplish it one way, shape, or form, and so... And so, again, we, we're going to try our best, sir, and, and accomplish those goals. Yeah, we'll take, I, I have long legs, so I try to take longer steps, but sometimes you do have to take it step by step, and that's, and that's how we're going to do it. We've laid out the plan on one aspect with a membership campaign that would be spoken to in, in a few minutes. We've, we've laid out the action plan of those individuals, those private companies that have been, that were in the past members of PVDF. That's going to be one strategy. Another strategy is going to be those new business development when it comes to membership, allowing them to become part of PVDF. So there is a, there is, that's one example of meeting one of the thresholds, which is private membership.
Right.
So...
Well, that was one of my other questions, is what's the membership now for...
Minimum membership?
Well, no. What is the membership total?
Oh, number, I believe we're at 52, 53? Prox.
And what are, what's the dues? Because, you know, again, I'm just interested because of what's in the agreement, you know, as far as benchmarks for incentives.
Yeah. The, the minimum membership is $500.
So, well, what I'm looking at, what is the membership amount today as an example? What are you bringing in as far as income from membership?
Oh, it's, it's a good about 50/50 between town and private membership. We want to increase the private membership to 75.
So what's reflected in your budget in terms of membership dues that you have accrued as part of your membership today? That is...
I guess I'm not trying to...
If you have 50 members today...
Correct. They are 50% of the...
So what would that equal in terms of dues that you've earned from those members? See, what I'm looking at again is you have a certain threshold in terms of income from dues that you will trip if you meet a certain level. What is that level today? What are we moving from? Because I think you have, you're looking at $60,000 as a, I guess, a trigger. If your dues go over $60,000, what are your dues today in terms of members?
Mayor, Council, I'm the Treasurer and Secretary for PVDF. I've got some of those numbers and stuff here. Right now, our, our investors and stuff scheduled for $44,000 minimum this year. We're, as I said, we're doing a campaign to try to increase it.
Right.
We, one of the things we've done this year is, Mike has worked together and set up some new standards for what we're going to give back to the investors. We've got different price categories based on how much they want to invest, which basically starts with 500, which is where he started, and we, we have a level all the way to $100,000 if we would have somebody that would want to step up to that much. But we have, you know, 500, or 2,000, or 5,000, or 10,000, different steps. And as a member and investor in there, there's different benefits they will get depending on the levels of investment that they do.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
So we're looking at it anywhere from 15,000 to 20,000 more...
Yes.
...in order to hopefully meet that and exceed it to get that incentive.
Correct.
Right, okay. Well, I was, I was just kind of curious what that was.
That's all right.
Vice Mayor, you have a comment? Dr. Wells, did you have a comment?
Never give a president a microphone. No. You know, sometimes we get so close to something, we don't realize how well-known you are. And I was so pleased when Larry, your town manager, and you, also, and the mayor came to our board meeting. And something that resonates all the time with me, Prescott Valley is the largest city down in this county. It is also the fastest-growing, and it's also the youngest. See, I was paying attention. It is also the one, from an education standpoint, and in my opinion, from an economic development standpoint, is the most progressive, and one that gets it of connecting the dots between education and economic development. As I sit on different boards, whether it's on the VV Rio or the PVEDF, one of my staff sits on the GPREP board, PVEDF and Prescott Valley is the one that is most admired and said, "Wow." And envied. Mike, I, I committed a mortal sin in some ways, you can see my upbringing, but when I had our Chair of VV Rio invite Mike Pradas over to them to show them more how to do economic development. So we have the partnerships, they're strong. As Mike said, we are constantly in conversation with the college. The Regional Economic Development Center provides all the data to all the economic developers across the county, but it's Mike who really, who Alex really likes to work with because you take it the next step. So I just encourage you to continue to be proud and to support this. This is fun. And Councilwoman Grossman, I would love, I am eager, very eager, to have a company say, "Hey, we need this training. We want to come to PV." We will ramp up so quickly, and we will expedite that, we're into competency-based, et cetera. We will move quickly. And CTEC is the best in the Northern Arizona and one of the very best in the whole state. So we're ready for them. So that's all that I had to say. If anybody has any questions...
Issues anyone?
No, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. Yeah, and I was referring to CTEC because I've seen some great changes in there.
Yeah.
We've taken the tour a couple of times, and I'm just totally impressed with that whole operation. And there's room for expansion, and there's always room for growth, and there's always a willing body in there to, you know, to ramp, like you say, ramp it up and, and get ready for the next project and challenge. So I thank you for your cooperation and concerns.
And support, strong support. So thank you.
Thank you. Jeri Ann, do you have your hand up? It's good to see you, Jeri.
Mayor, Town Council, good evening. As you know, I'm Jeri Ann Coiman, and I sit on the Board of Directors for the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation, and I have for about 10 years. So Larry, you've been stuck with me for a long time.
No kidding.
I know, I know. I wanted to address your question about education. I believe you were on the superintendent of Humboldt Unified School District Steering Committee, and weren't you quite impressed with the path that K-12 is taking in technology? It was very, very impressive, and I encourage, if any of you have a chance to attend one of those Steering Committee meetings, being a parent of a nine-year-old and an eight-year-old in the, in the Unified School District, again, after raising two older kids, it's mind-boggling where technology is going in the elementary school and, and how we're preparing to pass them on to Dr. Penny and Yavapai College. So on behalf of the Board of Directors and the private membership, we want to thank the Town Council for your many years of support and your knowledge and, and open dialogue and communication on the importance of economic development. We've all worked very hard on this board through the ups and the downs, and we, economic development is, is a different beast. It's, it's really a fascinating part of our growth, and without your support in the past and in the future, it's going to be difficult for us to continue. I think from what you've seen from Mike, I hope that you're extremely impressed with his knowledge, his contacts, and where he's going with our foundation. I have to kind of laugh when he talks about boots on the ground, because when Mike came here from Southern California in November, if you remember, Mike, you didn't own a pair of boots. So I had to send him over to Kohl's, but he's worn those boots down almost to the soles. I mean, this man is, is constantly going. He is dedicated, he is devoted, and every, every one of our board members sitting on the board are honored to be a part of this foundation. I do want to let you know that we are getting ready to kick off our private membership drive. And for most of you sitting on the board that has known a lot of the board members, on the Town Council that has, knows a lot of the board members, there are some very competitive people sitting on the board. And when I first was asked to serve on the board, for many years, I was the only woman. But now we've got some dynamite ladies on the board and our committee chairs for our membership drive, our private drive, our Dr. Penny Wells and Donna Laxson from Arizona Credit Union. These women are extremely competitive, and I think they're going to get the job done. We intend to exceed our annual numbers. So, again, if there's any questions that any of us can answer about the board, our focus, our, our, our future, our steps, we're open to any questions that you may have. And if you don't, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, our Treasurer and Secretary. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Questions, Council?
Mayor.
Yeah, Rick?
Not, not of Jeri Ann. I just have one point to make, and that is that it was mentioned earlier about the business that went, went into Prescott, or is headed for Prescott. And I understand that, and I know that's disheartening when you do all the work and, and they end up there. But I want to remind everybody that even though that business went to Prescott, Prescott Valley is poised very well to benefit from that business coming into the, into the Quad City area. We stand to sell homes to the people that move here. We stand to feed many of the people that move here. We're in very good shape with that. Any growth in the Quad City area is, is growth for Prescott Valley. So even though it won't help you one bit in meeting your quota, it certainly helps Prescott Valley. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Anderson. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Daly. I'm the Secretary-Treasurer of PVDF, also I'm the owner of Prescott Earl Space. I've been a supporter of PVDF since its inception financially. I'm one of the independent investors. I was arm-twisted and stuff about 15 years ago to become on the board. I've been on the board for at least the last 15 years. I think Ron and Steve Rutherford, who you're familiar with, twisted my arm about eight years ago to become Secretary-Treasurer. I've been Secretary-Treasurer for the last eight years. Seems like I can't ever get off of this thing. But basically, we've done the same thing that you have done. We heeded the economic downturn, like Hillary can attest to this, that we set aside our assets and stuff, reduced our budget, did cutbacks in, in a lot of our campaigning and stuff to stay, so we could stay within budget and everything else. That's why we're hoping to see this five-year contract be approved, okay? So it allows us some security going forward. One of the big things that Mike had done on setting up the different standards for their investors is trying to give something back to the individual investors, hoping to get some more money brought in from individuals. We've been in contact with several of the people, hoping to set a platyria that, that they would appreciate what they would be getting from it, and that's what we're trying to do. We have assets, and just like this town has done, we've maintained, you know, our budget, and we've set aside assets every year, and, and except for in one or two instances on our monthly budget, we've never had to dip into our assets. We've tried to control our expenditures. We've had very good success with the, the directors we've had. Mike has done an excellent job. I guess I'd have to say, I oversee every dime they spend, and, you know, they're, they're really been tight on the, on the thing for the last several years, and we're hoping to be able to move forward and expand our outreach into Southern California and even into Mexico. And, you know, that takes a commitment on your part and on our part to do it. So just to let you know, right currently, we're looking at about, at a six-month point of our annual budget. Currently, we're about $9,000 under what we had anticipated for our budget for this year. And so that means that we haven't had to dip into any of our savings or investments and stuff like that to meet that. So it's just a continuing effort as a board member and as treasurer, with the help of the directors and stuff like that, that we continue to do that. So, you know, want to let you know that we're being very proactive overseeing your investment into us and, and our investment into the community. So, thank you very much.
Questions, anyone? Mike, I think the whole group is doing a super job. I was on the council, by the way, and mayor when it was organized in 1996.
Yes, right. Yeah, I remember that. And they was, you know, I was one of the initial people, they came and twisted my arm because I've been, I've been in this area for, since 1983 with my business, and, you know, I felt it was, it was a good thing to get invested in, and I've been continuing investing every, personally, every year since then. And, you know, when they got me on the board, I, you know, I, I thought there was a, a need to keep manufacturing and keep people in tune in this, and that's why I continue to stay on there to represent that side of the, the community and stuff like that. And to the point earlier about the, the CTEC and stuff, you know, PVDF was instrumental in helping get CTEC going. We participated in, in many outreaches into the community, into the manufacturing business and stuff, so we could help them decide what courses and stuff of study they were going to have at that point. And, you know, they, we helped with the mine down in Baghdad at that time, and, you know, trying to get all their stuff set together. So that's a success that PVDF and Prescott Valley needs to, even, didn't come into either community, okay? But we helped alleviate the education and stuff so that there was a need for it. We could show that there was a need, and there's going to be a success, which I, obviously, everybody understands, CTEC has been a tremendous success for the area. Been, there's been hundreds of students go through that program, and a lot of them are employed right in this area. So, thank you.
Good. I think you're ready to take another leap forward.
We hope so.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Mike, Ron?
No, I just would close it down, the presentation, just by saying that we are actively working on the inventory or the inventory deficit that the community has of no vacancy of, it's a good thing we don't have any vacancy of 30,000, 40, 50, 100,000 square feet industrial here in our community. But it also presents a problem when we're looking at relocates into the area, they're ready to go and they want that inventory. Right now, PVEDF is working with two, potentially three different architects and builders to see what we can do to have a ready-built site within 90 to 120 days. It's a program we're just scratching the surface on right now, where we'll take a building all the way through the permit process, leave the permit on the shelf until we have the vendor or the tenant in place. Once the tenant's in place, we can almost guarantee a delivery within 120 days. It's, it's pretty fast. It's, it's the era we live in today. Before, I think Steve Rutherford was bold enough to put a group together and build a spec building and have it sit out there, another public-private relationship. That's not in our reality today, so we're doing the next best thing we can is to try to bring more private investors to the table that will, will provide their services and wait for payment until a tenant is found. We also appreciate and respect the investment you're making in with GPREP. We recognize it's an investment that this community is making, also with PVDF. We're mindful of that organization. We participate in their meetings. Mike's a participant in, in the role that he plays there. We're supportive of them. We will continue to be supportive of GPREP and, and fit in where we need to fit in on a regional level. And we appreciate your trust in our stewardship of the assets that you put in our possession. So thank you for this opportunity.
When someone wants to build here, we'll work to make it, make it happen.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Mary? No. Mary?
Mayor and Council, with, with your permission, we'll bring this back for your consideration at the Town Council meeting next Thursday.
Okay with everyone?
Yep.
Bring her back. I, I think we're ready for it. If we have more questions, we'll let you know next week. And thank you so much. Good presentation. Keep up the good work. Okay, now we go back to number four, presentation, mid-year financial review. Bill?
Number four?
Number three.
I'm sorry, number three. Let's go to number three first. I'm sorry, Diane. I was...
It's okay, Mayor.
Fall election.
I don't know whether you've noticed or not, or aware or not, but we are having technical issues with all the cameras in here this evening, which is why you... issues with all the cameras in here this evening, which is why you don't see that screen lit up over there. And unfortunately, the only camera that is working is this one over here. So people at home are not going to be able to see the PowerPoint presentations that you will see hopefully tonight down here from here. So... I'm sorry.
Well, I understand that we had a power surge caused by lightning on Sunday night that went ahead and wiped those out. The replacement equipment is on order and will be in place by next Thursday.
Right. So, anyway, we are a little bit handicapped tonight with that, which is unfortunate because I geared my presentation to the public. I was really hoping that we could go ahead and start our voter outreach tonight and really...
Would it be better if we deferred this to a later meeting?
I wouldn't mind doing that. I don't mind doing it tonight if you want to hear it once and then I can bring it back again as many times as you want.
Council, any choice? Vice Mayor?
The only problem we have is that the work study two weeks from tonight's been canceled. So it would be in March before we'd have another work study. That's the only concern I would have.
Well, we could do the, the audio portion will be picked up and can be put on our website. That portion can be done, but that's all.
I don't have a problem with doing it later, but if we want to get the word out, then we should probably do it.
Marty?
Is there a way to put the PowerPoint onto the website that people could access it if they're interested?
The PowerPoint is on the website right now, but only on our agenda stuff on Granicus. I'm sure that our technology folks can probably put it out there to run on the channel later, although I can't guarantee it. I'm not a techie.
Okay, Ryan is making a message. I'm sure he shows two thumbs up. Ryan says he can do it tonight if you want.
Go ahead. Shall I?
Shall we go ahead then?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Diane.
Can I see that down there? Okay, Mayor and Council, I'm here to talk a little bit tonight about the 2016 election coming up. As you know, it's twofold at this point. We have the home rule or the alternative expenditure limitation, if you will, coming up, as well as the council member election for four seats this year. Our primary is on August the 30th and with the November 8th general or runoff election, if you will. And I want to really stress that, especially where the public is concerned, because they're so used to having their elections in the spring in odd-numbered years as opposed to this year, which is an even-numbered year, fall election. So there's going to be quite a bit of an adjustment for not only the potential candidates, but also for my staff and for the rest of the town as well, and including any of the public out there, the voting members of the public, who might potentially have a little bit of confusion about how this is all going to work. So I'm going to be doing an extensive voter outreach, as I mentioned to you earlier, trying to educate them on how this can all be accomplished and the easiest way possible to do some of that. So we'll go through a little bit of that tonight. The first thing that we'll be kicking off with early in the election cycle is begin with Bill Coppe's financial stuff, having to do with the expenditure limitation. So we'll have those, all those public hearings and everything coming up first. And then in there somewhere, we will also have the call of election. And you'll notice that's all happening in April. It sounds odd, doesn't it, to have it in April? That's how we're kicking it off for the fall. Followed by then the council election. And the candidates will begin to prepare for the election cycle themselves. The packets will be available the first part of April for anybody that wants to run for council can come in and meet with me and we'll sit down and go through that page by page. You know, the experienced ones know how we do it. And I will do that with any newcomers as well. The signatures that are required this year are 244 minimum with a maximum of 488. I expect after this fall election, this being a federal, state, county, districts, municipal election, that those numbers are going to go up quite a bit. Meanwhile, these are some of the dates that someone may ask a candidate about when they're out knocking on doors, trying to get petitions signed, et cetera, like when voter registration might close, which would be August the 1st, and when early voting actually begins, which is just a couple of days later, right after that. And then right at that same time period, candidates can go ahead and start putting up their signs. And of course, I will be distributing to them the town code and the map pulled together by ComDev on where the signs can and cannot go, so that we don't have any potential problems with that. As I said, we're doing some major voter outreach efforts. And one of the major reasons is just not the change in the election cycle itself, but also the fact that with the consolidated election called by the legislature, we cannot hold an all-male ballot. Therefore, we have to have voting centers in town. And there should be about three or four of them in town. But so many of our voters are not used to that yet. And if you're not on the permanent early voting list at this point, you will not get a ballot in the mail. And you're probably wondering, well, is there any chance, any way, that anybody could get around that? Well, yes, there is something you can do about that. And that is called a permanent early voting list signup, which you can be doing that through the Yavapai County. I have a ton of those forms in here. I'm really encouraging folks to do that. And I'll tell you what some of the benefits are of that in just a minute. But first of all, I would like to give you a little bit of the statistics about what our voter electorate looks like right now. As of last week, we had 21,921 voters. So I'm saying we have 22,000 voters, give or take. Seventy percent of those are on the permanent early voting list. They will get their ballot in the mail automatically. They will not have to go to the polling place to cast their vote. The other 30% of our electorate, the almost 6,600 folk, who don't get their ballot in the mail because they're not on that list, will have to go to the voting center. Remember, those folks are used to getting their ballots in the mail. The election period is going to roll around and they're going to start calling, "Why didn't I get a ballot? When am I going to get a ballot? How do I get a ballot?" Well, part of the great voter outreach is going to be, let's teach them how to do that. So I'm going to suggest to them that they may want to take the step to go ahead and register with Yavapai County to get on the permanent early voting list so that they will get their ballot in the mail. And I've provided an address up there directly into the voter registration place to get that done. Plus, I have a ton of those forms with me if anybody in the audience is interested in having one. If they're a registered voter, they can fill this out, send it in, and they're then on the list to receive a ballot in the mail. And besides that, candidates and other organizations as well can also carry these to folks as they're getting their petitions signed and encourage the voters to do that and explain some of the benefits to them, which might be the fact that they won't have to stand in line, that they'll get their ballot in the mail, that they can make their choices while at home in their own time before they vote that ballot, give it some considerable consideration. Notice that they will get ahead of time, probably about 90 days ahead of time from the county. We'll let them know that an election is coming up and it's a voting center election. But it'll give them the dates of that election, but it will also let them know when they can expect their ballot, which is something that typically would not happen if you're not on that list either. And it also helps them as far as notifying them that they need to select, you know, a party registration in order to do this. So that's the benefits of doing that. So if anybody's interested in those benefits, I would encourage them to contact the county to do that. And I'd like everybody to be aware of these options out there. I want all the help I can get to let them know that we have switched to this new fall, even near cycle, so they're aware of that and when the upcoming elections are. And let them know about the permanent early voting list to get around the voting center thing so that they can get their ballot in the mail, too. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, anyone? Mike?
I was just going to comment. I know my wife got a letter indicating she is on that permanent list. So I think voters are informed through the county that they're on that list.
What's your question?
It's not a question, just a comment.
Just a comment, okay.
Yeah. You understood what I said, right? Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Diane, any Vice Mayor?
I was just going to say, I think it would still be a good idea to plan on coming back in March at a work study and doing this again for everyone.
I appreciate that. I would love to do that.
I'd like to see that again if we could get it on the agenda.
Can you put it on the agenda, Larry? I think that's a great idea.
Make that happen.
Thank you.
Diane, you'll keep us, remind us, okay? Remind yourself. Any other comments, questions?
I just want to thank you. You have a hard job. This is a lot of work and we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I enjoy what I do.
Their voter registration numbers might change by then, Diane. Can we cope with that? Okay, we'll move on to number four, mid-year financial report. Mr. Coppe.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Now, if you want me to postpone my presentation to a later date, just let me know and I'll be more than happy to do it. So I know I got two people in the back that really would like me...
Anybody want to table the... No, go ahead, Bill.
Well, actually, there's a precedent that has been set tonight, and that is he can do the presentation tonight and then come back in March and do it again.
But I was, yeah, that's what I was going to say. Just come back at March.
Well, you don't want any council members to be there, do you?
Kind of like pulling off a Band-Aid. Let's just get it over with.
How long has it been?
I mean, I'm looking forward to this.
Yeah.
That's what I, you know what I meant to say.
Mayor, Council.
This guy is non-sleeping.
I've been, every, I think I've been doing coming before you for the last, well, council, before council for the last, I don't know, 10 to 12 years, giving them a mid-year budget overview. So basically, it's a snapshot of how we're doing revenues and expenditures against budget and then compared to the previous year's expenditures and revenues for that same time period.
Let it rip, Bill. Everybody's anxious to get...
I know, I know. I'm going to try to... All right. So the first one, first slide is our major revenue categories for, in the general fund. So since half the year is expired, what we need to look at, I guess, is the percent remaining column. So anything that is less than 50%, we are ahead of budget, obviously. So charges for services, investment earnings, which includes rental income or some rental fees that we receive, they're below 50%. So those are doing well. Now, two of them that are a little bit misleading are taxes is one and intergovernmental revenues is the other one. Now, taxes, that number only reflects five months worth of collections. So if you add the six-month in there, we would be below 50% at this time. And that doesn't even include the half a percent that will be added in the beginning or starting in January. So right now, based on my projections, we should be around 3% over budget at this point in taxes, based on our current collections. Intergovernmental revenues, it's above 50% for a couple of reasons. One is state shared revenues, our state sales tax component, that only reflects five months. Again, so that's another category that where we only got five months of collections. So that's over $300,000 that if you would add there, that would bring that percentage down. The other one is the library district. We get over $300,000 from them a year. Typically, we don't receive that money until the third quarter. And then the last item that's included in there is our, the water or the drainage projects from the Yavapai Flood Control District. There's a half a million dollars that we have budgeted there. Right now, we've only received 100,000. So basically, looking at intergovernmental right now, I think we're right on target to collect what's been budgeted. So I have no concerns about intergovernmental revenues at this point. The one that is a problem right now is license and permits. You can see we're at 69% of collection. The biggest problem with that category was that we had discovered this year that we, and it's been going on for the last couple of years, where we have been accidentally recording DIFs and utility connection charges in the building permits revenue line. So as, once we discovered that, we are moving those monies now to the appropriate funds. But as a result, you're going to see some numbers that are significantly less than what we had anticipated to collect in the building permits line. So that one right now, probably, I think will be about 1.3 million is what I'm projecting that we're going to collect. But our budget was 2 million. So I'm looking at probably a shortfall there, about $700,000 in the building permit categories as a whole. Yes, sir.
Did we, have we been doing that in the past?
Yes.
So this is a correction that will change and so we can't look back at previous budget levels because they're combining...
In the building permit line is correct. Yes. All the, that's the only line item that has been affected at this point. And going forward, I will be probably making some of those changes in the budget book to reflect what the actual numbers would be in, not only in the building permits line, but also in the DIF, the impact fees and the connection charges also.
So you're saying that there may be other lines affected?
Uh, no, no.
No.
Only the building permits revenue line. That's the only one that was affected.
Okay, I thought I heard you say...
No, that's the only one.
Okay, that's the only one we're going to be, okay.
But conversely, there is a couple of other numbers affected, and that is an increased volume of dollars, increased number in the DIF accounts that were not projected. So the money has been collected.
Yeah, I understand.
It's just posted in different places.
Still, yeah. I know, it didn't go away. It just moved over.
It did not disappear.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, yeah. I just was wondering if any other lines were going to go higher. That's all. Okay. Thank you.
This slide shows our TPT collection by categories over the last, well, 10 years, nine years, 2007 through 15 is actual amounts that we collected. 2016 is what I'm projecting. And that's, that will include the half a cent increase that'll go into effect in January. I guess a couple of points, all of the categories actually have seen an increase over the previous year based on our first six months of collections, except for construction. That one has actually had a 14% decrease over the previous year. Some of the other areas that I've actually seen increases is retail is up 11%, restaurants and bars are up nine, and hotels are up 12% over the previous year as of December. State shared revenues, this is our sale... State shared revenues, this is our sales tax and then our income tax. I guess the only point I wanted to show here is that we are seeing a minor increase a year after year of our state shared revenues. We are unsure where we're gonna be going in the next year or two years, as it comes from the state, we'll find out, we'll get more information, but we won't have that at the beginning of our budget process like we normally have. It's been told that it's probably gonna be late March, which is pretty far into our budget, before we'll really have any idea what our true numbers are. So when we first start or when we go into the budget process, we may just have estimates as to what we're gonna collect in our state shared revenues. So I'll have hopefully more information, hopefully by the end of February, beginning of March, to know exactly where we're headed with state shared revenues.
Yeah, I just had a question. I think is not the legislature going through a process now where this may change anyway, our state shared formula? Not down in the state shared revenue formula, what they are looking at is population updates from some special census that have been taken. The other thing that they're doing is they are attempting to implement some new tax approaches. And the Department of Revenue, January 1, was supposed to be taking over that process, they were not ready to do that, and that's still a work in progress.
Suppose our state shared revenue numbers are not gonna change for next year, the problem that we were running into is getting the new population numbers. You know, some people have done, cities have done mid-decadal censuses, and so they're trying to get all of that information built into the calculation. So my understanding is that's what's taking so much time to get the new numbers out. This slide right here shows building permits, 2007 through 15 are actually for 12 months, 2000, well, for 15, 16, you can see is only for a six-month period. So at this point in time, we definitely look like we're gonna exceed our 2015 number, and we should be closer probably to 2007 number at this point.
And that'll help that other problem with the, the one we were just talking about, where the.
No, actually, this number right here, this is actually the amount of building permits that should have been recorded in the general fund. This is a true reflection of the revenues that should be in the fund.
Okay, so I can't.
What was added on top of that was impact fee monies and utility connection charge monies for every permit that was pulled. Though, some of those monies were then deposited into the building permit line. So it really has nothing, really no impact on how many permits were pulled, it's how that money that was collected when a permit was received, where that money went. That's the only difference.
Alrighty.
This slide right here shows expenditures by the major expenditure categories as of December 31, 15, and then compared to 2014. In this category, in this slide, if you look at the percent remaining column, anything that is below 50% is actually then a problem. So right now, there's five line items that are below 50%. Technical services, repairs and maintenance, insurance, travel and education and transfers. The only one I'm actually concerned about at this point is technical services. Right now, it's a small budget, a relatively small budget, but that's where all of our banking fees and services are charged to. We've been getting a lot of people that are gonna, that are using their credit card or debit card to pay their bills. Every time they use, they pay their bill with a credit card, we have to pay a fee. So that fee, and this is where we charge that line to, where we record that expenditure. And it just continues every year, I put a 3% to 5% increase, while the actual expenditures are 10 to 15% more than what we have anticipated, just because of the volume of activity and everything that we're doing now. You know, we're going to our phone system to pay your utility bills, you know, you can pay it over the phone now, while we didn't have that before. So there's a lot of things that we have available that we did not have before, that are actually where this line item is gonna continue to grow probably significantly over the next couple of years. We have discussed, me and Larry have discussed in the past about adding a convenience fee to anybody who wants to use a credit card. You know, we pretty much have, at this point, asked that idea because we want to encourage people to pay their bill. What's the easiest way to do it is to pay over the phone or whatever, you know, on the internet or something. So right now, we are not charging a convenience fee. But I know a lot of other municipalities, they have been adding convenience fees when they pay with a credit card, just because of the fact that we have to pay. And depending on what credit card you use, the rate changes depending on the credit card. So, but that's something that we have not done. So as a result, you're gonna see this line item continue to grow probably year after year.
I, I just wanna say, I understand, you know, that that is an expense when people do use their credit cards and all that, but on the other hand, it's very annoying when you're trying, when you're paying your bills and then you're getting charged a fee to pay your bill. You know what I mean? It's just a comment.
And that's part of the reason why we've never done that.
Yeah, no, I.
Years, I think it was, I don't know, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, we started, right when we started getting into, when we had credit card machines, and we were, we were actually charging a convenience fee.
Which is crazy.
Depending on what kind of credit card you had, and it was, we got a lot of complaints about it.
Well, I'm glad we don't do this.
And so we did away with it.
Yep, we scuttled any discussion after Bill briefly brought it up. How many places do you use your credit card or debit card at? Lots of places. Do you end up paying a convenience fee for that? The answer is yes, but it's not shown when you purchase something. It's built into the cost of the meal, the clothing, whatever it is, it's just part of doing business anymore. But you don't wanna penalize people for doing business using a card, which over the long term is cheaper for us in terms of personnel and the processing. So, no, there's not gonna be a separate fee.
Okay, thank you.
This slide right here shows the expenditures by department. Again, anything that is below 50% could be a potential problem. Right now, there's only three departments that are below 50%. I'm not worried about the first one whatsoever, that has no concerns of mine whatsoever. The one I do have an issue with, though, is non-departmental. That's where we budget all of our money to pay for, you know, we pay into department revenue for their fees, we pay, are all of our development agreements come out of this line item. And right now, all of that is based on, it's sales tax driven. So if those businesses are doing much better, then our reimbursements will be going up. So based on my projections, it looks like we might be a little bit short in this category as it relates to developer reimbursement. So that's one of the areas that we'll be monitoring over the next, you know, three to four months to see where we're gonna end up with, at, but that would be one where I think where we may end up overspending our budget is in our reimbursement categories.
But do understand, there's an offsetting revenue that pays for that.
That is true.
Yeah.
I was just talking about expenditures, that's all.
Checks and balance.
This slide right here shows our highway user revenue fund. On the top, you can see all of the revenues. Again, HERF revenue is just like the state shared sales tax, it is only, reflects five months worth of collections. Right now, I am projecting that we're gonna be right around $3 million in collections, I'm projecting by the end of the year, so we'll be a little bit above budget. So, you know, not too much. Personnel services, you can see right now, we're at 53%, which is fine. Operating expenditures, 25% of the budget is remaining. That's a lot of, because we put a million dollars in for the street maintenance and AC overlays and chip. So that one Norm has already spent basically in the first quarter, probably the first month of the year, new fiscal year, Norm spent that money on chip seal and that. So I think we're gonna be okay for the rest of the year. Right now, since most of the big, large expenditures have already occurred, so I think we're gonna be okay for the rest of the year in this budget. This is just the collections of HERF revenues over the year. Again, the only thing I want to point out is that we've, we have, where our trend is positive, but the increases are very, very small at this point. We're looking at maybe 2% growth over the next couple of years in HERF and a lot of the state shared revenues.
Well, it is nice to see it coming up a little bit.
Yeah, it's coming up a little bit, that's true.
Little by little.
Yep.
It's hopeful.
This right here is the impact fees, and here's where the, you see the little asterisks. A year ago, if you, if I would've came here and I would've showed these actual numbers, you would've seen significantly different numbers on the presentation. What we did is that we revised our numbers to show what the actual revenues were for those fiscal years. So you can see that the growth, the trend is positive, it's going up. The one that very, for this current fiscal year is only as of six months, so I'm thinking that we're gonna exceed, you know, surpass over 2 million, about 2.2 million, I believe that we're gonna collect this year. So it'll be a little bit above what you see the previous two years. So I think that growth or that level of collections will start to continue for a short, for next couple of years, I believe, anyway. Wastewater funds. The user fees, right now, we are actually ahead of where we, where we think we were gonna be. So right now, you know, we're, I'm thinking we're gonna exceed probably $5 million in our wastewater collections for this year, which is, you know, it's hard to predict what we're gonna collect in these fees, that's for sure. It's all, a lot of it is based on consumption, how much water you use, even for the wastewater, there's a winter average that's in the calculation, but during the summer months, you know, it's hard to really determine how much revenues you're gonna take in for wastewater, it's just a very difficult calculation at this point. But we are ahead of trend, our budget, so I think we are gonna surpass our budget this year. Operating expenditures, right now, it looks good, but you know, it only takes one repair for this budget to really get thrown out of whack. So last year, we had one that was over $200,000 that really threw the budget into, basically overspent the line item. So we look okay. Personnel services, you can see we're below 50%. It's the same in water, basically, we had an employee that retired, and so they had a lot of leave, and that we had to pay off his leave. So we don't budget for when, you know, there's the leave, general leave payouts, we don't really budget for that. Typically, we wait and usually we make that up when, you know, by the time that person leaves till you hire the next person, typically, there's enough time in there to cover up some of that. But he definitely had a few hours of leave that he had accumulated over his years. So overall, the wastewater and then also the water, they look very strong at this point. The downside is on user fees for water, because of the wet months that we've had, our collections are way down. I'm about, I'm about 30 to 40 million gallons behind projection for gallons billed, behind my projection at this point, and a lot of it is due to the fact of the weather. It's all weather driven. So right now, we have 7.8 million. I don't think we're gonna reach that this year. We're gonna be slightly below that number for this upcoming year. But you can see our wastewater capacity and resource fees, again, this is where that adjustment was made, from the prior where the, you know, moving the money from the building permits. Wastewater capacity and resource was actually one of the funds that actually got more money than what was originally anticipated or recorded. Personnel services, again, it's the same reason, we're a little bit under budget. And operating expenditures, right now, we're currently right on target with the budget. Total debt, I wanted to show this slide real quick, just to show that, right now, we're at $69 million, and this is.
That's right.
This is principal and interest, that's right here. Back in 2007 and '08, we were at $120 million, so you can definitely tell it's at least going in the right direction. And we did, we've done a lot of refinancing, as you can see on this slide, this is a breakdown of those, of my principal and interest, and then funding source, as you see over on the right-hand side. But you can see refunding bonds, 2004, 2011, 2012. Everything that we previously issued has all been refunded, and all those have been refunded to get lower interest rates and to save the town money. The only one that's not currently reflected on here is the library building, we actually did refinance. About $9 million of the 11.11 million, we refinanced that to a lower interest rate. Those numbers are not reflected on this at this time. So, but there's around $700,000 in interest that actually we would be saving. And then the last slide is our major capital projects that we currently have at this point. You can just see, we have $10 million in the governmental funds, we've only spent $615,000. A lot of that is grants and that, that we, you know, if we get the money, then we can spend it, but right now, we have a lot of projects on there that basically have not started yet at this point. Enterprise funds, again, even, that's the same thing, 2.6 million, and we've only spent $243,000 at this time. So with that, I will answer any questions, if council has.
Questions, anyone? No questions? I think, Bill, you did a good job.
Alright, thank you.
Great job on that, savings on the debt. That's fabulous.
We have a great group of, with our bond underwriters and legal counsel that really kinda keeps an eye out for us, and any opportunities, of course, they can to save us money, but also that they can earn a little bit of money, they're always willing to come forward and let us know, that's for sure.
And maybe I missed, I was just kinda curious, on our rainy day fund type account, exactly where are we at on that?
The rainy day, we're around 15 million at this point, in our fund balance at this point. But right now, between now and at the end of the year, it just fluctuates so much, but I'm projecting, I think at the end of this year, 16, 16 million something, I believe, is our, what we call, consider rainy day fund is our fund balance. That's what I'm projecting at the end of this year, I believe.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on into presentation, ice skating statistics. But you got the slide in, on us, Mike or Brian?
You're not wearing a tutu?
I'm sorry?
Same thing.
Wearing a what? I have a tutu.
A tutu.
Okay.
About a 33.
I prefer not-not. It's been a while. Not-not. Been doing that.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to give a quick little presentation in regards to our ice skating season that has just concluded. Fantastic season, very well attended. In doing so, we had a little over 9,800 folks come through the door, utilizing 9,000 skate rentals during that period of time. We utilized 153 hours in total over at the event center, and that spanned a 43-day season in doing such. This gives you a little idea in years of comparison of our days open as well as hours utilized. The asterisks there in our 13-14 season indicated a six-month period, that's when the event center was in full operation and the sundogs were still participating there at the center. The last two fiscal years give you a direct comparison of that transition over those years, and the days of operation were more readily available to us this year due to some scheduling availability that was, had because of events and activities there. In total, our attendance definitely was the highest of the last three years, again, reaching reasonable jumps as well as skate rentals during that time. And we saw some rather significant increases in all age groups of 12 and under and our 13 and up, substantial growth in our skate rentals. A lot of that staff gets some feedback in regards to folks that are attending, we felt that we had a rather significant jump of folks coming from outside of our community, and especially some jumps in the holiday period. So overall, we had a very nice trending season, this was our second highest season of utilization. We nearly toppled our best season ever, we were just short by. Uh, we were just short by less than 100 in doing such. And, uh, we had a very significant use. We had 16 days of 200-plus skate rentals compared to three days in the years, uh, in the year, season prior, as well as 19 sessions with 200-plus patrons compared to only seven in the fiscal year before. Uh, so when they came, they did come, and they were very, very active in doing such. Uh, we feel that, uh, our web presence as well as also our social media outreach, uh, had a, quite a bit to play with that. Uh, and we also, uh, saw good utilization, uh, from our student populations in doing such. Uh, again, staff was reflecting in regards to holidays. We had a 22% growth over the Thanksgiving timeframe, and then we saw a decrease, uh, as far as sessions went, uh, over the Christmas holiday period, uh, down by one, but we also saw significant growth in that same period of time, too. And then New Year's Eve this year, we were able to get that in. Last year, we had, uh, a significant ice storm, uh, that came in and doing such. So saw some, some good runs, some good attendance, uh, great activities there, uh, but ultimately, uh, a fantastic season. The facility was well utilized. Our staff was, uh, well, you, well, uh, well-challenged with the opportunities that they were presented there, so, which was, uh, good for them. Uh, they were able to really make some significant, uh, changes in operation there, and I know we're going to make some even more significant alterations in, in enhancing our customer service in doing such. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that you'll see in our next year budget request, we'll have, uh, need for new skates, uh, so we're burning those up. Is there? Questions, Vice Mayor?
No. It is good to see the increase, though. It's good to see the usage.
Definitely. Anyone else got any questions, comments? Brian, that's, that's encouraging. Just keep up the good work. We will try. Thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll move on to number seven, discussion, donation fund budget transfer. Ryan?
I drew the short straw back there, so I have to give the presentation on this one. This is a fun one, actually. I'll give you a 60-second history, and they were nearing the end of the meeting here. Uh, back in 2004, the town entered into a development agreement with NCU, uh, to extend the street utilities out to their site, uh, there north of Unit 20. Part of that agreement, uh, required them to pay us back for those improvements, which they did within a couple of years. They paid us back for the street and utility improvements. But as part of the agreement, they also agreed to pay the town $2 per credit hour for the next 10 years. Uh, off and on, uh, over the past, you know, 10, 11 years now, we've used that money for various purposes, donations to the Boys and Girls Club, used some of it to buy flags for the Hilling Field, um, lots of other fun and exciting things for the community. Uh, this year, we have 125,000 budgeted. Uh, we've already spent a good portion of that, buying computers for the library. Uh, we're buying Bryanston's summer movie equipment so we can expand that program. It's been very popular. Uh, once we're all done with that, we expect a balance of about $106,000 left in that fund. Uh, the agreement's expired, so there's no longer money going into us. We're just working off of the, the balance. Our town manager had a conversation with them last week and proposed that we use that balance this year to help fund improvements on our new Glass Road Hill Trail. So we would use a funding to pay for the parking lot, for trail materials, for signage. Um, Brian and I are working with a couple of Boy Scouts, uh, to install signage on the trail, so we're excited to be able to do that this year. Uh, because we're moving money from one fund to another, it requires council approval. The money we're using is a potential CDBG grant that we won't be getting this fiscal year, so we have lots of budget capacity. We just have to move the paper money over to where the, the real money is, so. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
I, I just had a comment. So I've already been on the trail a couple of times, and I absolutely love it. I realize it's not done, but I snuck up there anyway. And it's wonderful, and I'm really excited about this, and I really want to thank Larry for all the work he's doing up there, because he is doing an amazing job and saving the town a lot of money by doing the work that he's doing. And the community is going to really benefit from this trail. I mean, it is absolutely wonderful, and I, and I just can't wait till it's like.
It's gonna be fun.
Open and going. So this is great. I'm loving this. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
If you're okay, we'll bring that back next week for your consideration.
Ever, anyone want to see this again next week on the, uh, I, I think the answer is yes. Well, bring her back.
Great. I think it's scheduled to be on the consent agenda unless you want to talk about it again.
In March.
March again.
Yeah. All of you come back.
We may have spent the money by then.
Thank you, Ryan. I guess we're, uh, with that, we're ready to adjourn. Mr. Williams, it was good to see you. Appreciate your coming by. If you have any questions, Vice Mayor is here to answer them. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.